This meeting of the Select Board
Recording in progress.
is called to order on April 8, 2024 at 6:01 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. If you're willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I believe we have one set. Are we ready to proceed?
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 2, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next on the agenda is discussion of 2024 Annual Town Meeting warrant articles, and we have Emily Wentworth with us. For other people in the audience, this will probably take about an hour, so you're welcome to stay and listen, but if you want to leave and come back, that's acceptable, too.
This is riveting material.
It is exciting, Emily. We're happy you're here.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and share my screen. While I do that, I'll just let you know I'm the Community Planning Director, and as Liz introduced me, my name is Emily Wentworth. Okay, so, on our agenda this evening, we will be presenting the Planning Board recommendations to Town Meeting on the 2024 zoning articles. There are 11 under consideration that are on the warrant. They broadly fall into three categories. Several are in response to state mandates. There is another batch of articles that were identified as a meeting a local need, and then there are a couple of more corrective changes, or what we generally refer to as cleanup articles. So through the presentation, I'll just try to identify which category the article falls into, summarize the intent, identify any revisions that were made through the public hearing process, and then indicate what the recommendation of the Planning Board and Advisory Committee was on each. So the first is Article 28, entitled "Personal Wireless Service Facilities." The intent of this article is to encourage improved wireless services throughout the town by expanding both the types and the locations for facilities under our existing regulations, Section 5E of the zoning bylaw. It does that through two items. The first is it creates a new definition and a permitting mechanism or allowance for small cell wireless facilities. You can see a couple of examples of what those may be or could look like down the road. They are basically antennas or equipment that are located within or on non-residential host structures such as utility poles or streetlights. Those types of facilities are not currently defined in the bylaw, therefore would be deemed prohibited. The original article proposed to allow them, as we do presently, for distributed antenna systems by a special permit that also triggers a site plan review application. Just actually after the Planning Board's vote, there was a suggestion made to the Advisory Committee under their review to change that allowance or permitting mechanism to, still a special permit, but one that would not also trigger a site plan review, which is logical since something stuck on a host structure is not actually going to change the site. The other item that's newly proposed is to permit cell towers, also by special permit, within the official and open space district. The article also clarifies that cell towers are allowed already, as we believe the intent is, in the personal wireless services overlay district. That language just isn't there, so that one piece of this is sort of a cleanup, but generally this article is in response to a locally identified need for better service in town. It also would support the next article in the warrant, Article 29 initiated by this board, that would allow for a portion of the DPW property to be leased to a cell tower provider if approved by Town Meeting. The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend adoption of this article, and then, as I noted earlier, as the AGCOM did as well, with some corrective measures to the definition of small cell facility, as well as a minor change to that type of permit that would allow those. So that's a summary of Article 28. The next zoning article...
Before you... Are we going to do comments of each one?
Sure.
Just so... So I really appreciate your work on this, and I agree that this moving forward without the need for site plan review is not only a logical step, but also, I think, is consistent with what cell providers want, which is to be able to get cell service in the town without having to spend an inordinate amount of time going through steps that really are necessary. So is what's before us the version that would go to Town Meeting, which is without the need for a site plan review?
Yes, the version that's in the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee, so what's printed in the warrant under Article 28, requires it just a special permit A1, so no site plan review from the Planning Board.
And I think you'll hear from Bill, Liz, and myself that this board has been pressing for increased cell service in the town. It's not only a convenience to our residents, but also, I think, an important step in terms of public safety. So we really appreciate you moving forward with this.
Did the Planning Board revote the article as amended by the Advisory Committee?
They didn't revote it. They are aware of it and express no concerns.
Okay, great.
It's something in the past they've waived site plan review anyways because it's not touching the ground, so I don't think it was viewed as a substantial change.
And we've seen these small towers already being implemented, right? Like AT&amp;T just did it on Lincoln Street. I think we have One Foot Hill Street. So how does this change what we're currently seeing being adopted by the Z... Like the ZBA did a hearing last month on it.
Yeah, so those were approved through a variance process.
As a variance, okay.
As opposed to a special permit. And while the way the zoning board would view those variances is a little bit different than most variances because it's viewed through the lens of the Telecommunications Act and the Federal Communications Regulations, it's just, it's friendlier to explicitly allow those uses, particularly when it's, you know, meeting a local need.
Great. Thank you.
Keep going.
Okay, so Article 30, entitled "Update of Flood Plane Map and Regulations." This form of article you've seen in the past, I think as most recently as in 2021. The intent is to revise the map references, an effective date of the zoning map for the flood plane protection overlay district, to incorporate revisions on the flood insurance rate maps, normally called FRS, issued by FEMA for the Charles Watershed. Hingham has 16 whole or partial panels in the town. 11 of those are affected by this particular revision. Others in the Cape Cod Watershed were last amended in 2021 and remain unchanged. So Item 1 of the article would update those references and the associated maps. The second part of this amendment relates to the regulations themselves under Section 3C of the bylaw. It's two parts. This part, the first, is that we're really just restructuring the language under that section to be more similar, consistent with other special regulations in the bylaw, but we also, in doing that, had to ensure that we maintained all the requirements or met all the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. So we are working very closely with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, specifically their, the state flood plane hazard manager, to make sure that our language would meet what are both state and federally mandated requirements. The impact of the article, it will result in an increase of the number of properties that will be required to get flood insurance. Conversely, were we not to update the bylaw, no properties in the flood plane would be eligible for the National Flood Insurance, for flood insurance under the National Flood Insurance Program. Just in terms of some of the deadlines, FEMA had issued its final determination on the Charles Watershed maps. In January, the town has to adopt those within six months, so the effective date will be July 3 of this year, but at the annual Town Meeting, it is the most convenient time to adopt them. There were significant changes to the language in this article through the process, and that's primarily because we were working with DCR on it. There's red line available on the Planning Board's webpage if anybody's interested in viewing that, but at the end of the day, the Planning Board and the Advisory Committee both unanimously voted to recommend adoption in the manner revised through the public hearing process.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
So you mentioned that there were some properties added that would be, now need flood insurance. Were any properties removed?
Yeah, there probably were properties. We focused on the properties that would be adversely impacted as opposed to beneficially impacted, but yeah, we did catch a few of those.
And I understand that these regs will affect the scope of where flood insurance is required. Do they do anything to affect the rates?
Oh, no, not through the zoning bylaw.
I wouldn't think so. I just wanted to clarify that. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Bill?
Nothing.
Okay, great. Okay. So next, Article 31, entitled "Groundwater Protection Overlay District." The intent, you can read here, but it's to replace our existing Ackard Pond Watershed and Hingham Aquifer Protection District regulations, which are housed in Section 3D of the bylaw, with a new groundwater protection overlay district, so a shorter improved name, we hope, and to amend the map to depict the bounds of the Mass DEP Zone 2. You can see that in this image on the right-hand side. That was approved, as you can see in the title, back in 1998. It postdates what our current overlay district was based upon. That dates to approximately 10 to 15 years earlier, and this again is a state mandated zoning amendment, so the town as a public water supplier is required to protect the Zone 2 recharge area, to its wells, to reduce the risk of threats to the drinking water quality. Protection has to be in the form of zoning controls that prohibit certain land uses that are identified in the state's wellhead protection regulations. Those are uses that we likely don't permit anyways, including landfills, junkyards, graveyards, automobile graveyards, I apologize, storage of petroleum products, fertilizer, et cetera. So in addition to the actual map change, that entire section will be reworked, both structurally, like the last one, but the changes themselves are largely based on the model bylaw that is provided by Mass DEP. It was reviewed both by local entities and the state. Our compliance deadline is November 14 of 2024, so this is our only meeting between now and then. It was unanimously recommended for adoption by the Planning Board. It also was unanimously recommended for adoption by the Advisory Committee with just a few minor corrections to section references. Okay. Joe?
Emily, are these considered local regulations or state regulations?
Both. So these regulations are already housed under 310 CMR 22, but the state also requires that we locally adopt those same requirements. I think it's more of a suspended approach, where there's, you know, somebody here locally that's enforcing them, because it may be more difficult to do at that next level.
Sure. Where I'm going is if, in the future, we need to deal with 40B-type projects where 40B preempts the local regs, would these be preempted?
No, they're actually, they're kind of...
Right, okay.
... parallel to each other.
Yeah, great. Okay, no other questions?
Do we need to switch out one of the microphones?
Yeah, I don't know why, but...
I'm sorry. I coughed.
Okay.
No questions on this article. Thank you.
Okay, so next, Article 32 is related to brew pubs, breweries, wineries, and distilleries. The intent is to create a new use, as noted in the title, to allow, that would allow those uses to be located in three districts, Business A, Business B, and the industrial park, by special permit, and it's the form of special permit that would also require site plan review. The initial article proposed two items. The first would be to renumber what is currently used 4.18 in the use table. That allows for retail sales of alcoholic beverages from 4.18 to 4.18A, and then create a new category, 4.18B, that would allow the brew pubs, breweries, wineries, and distilleries, including potentially beer gardens, tasting areas, food and/or beverage services, and the like. And again, those are limited to just three different districts. Through the public hearing process, there was a third item added that would create, under Section 6 of the bylaw, definitions for each of those categories with a reference back to the state statute that also regulates them. The article was seen as consistent with the master plan, which includes a policy recommendation to support local businesses, attract new enterprises that provide employment and... My, the bottom of my slide is cut off. And... ... and services to residents and visitors alike. And so it was therefore seen as kind of locally initiated, but also consistent with a number of other communities that have similar regulations. The state provides a website for these types of uses. There's more than 130 across the Commonwealth, and nearby communities that we surveyed said they had not experienced any issues since permitting these types of uses. It was the majority of the Planning Board recommended adoption. The vote was four to one, and then the Advisory Committee recommended adoption unanimously.
Okay. And the definitions here, are those consistent with the state definitions? Okay. Joe?
Yeah, Emily, could you comment on the Board of Health and their view on this?
Yeah, we did receive written comments, and a member of the Board of Health participated in one of the Planning Board hearings, expressing some concern that allowing this type of use may perpetuate what they view as a public health concern with drinking, maybe specifically related to youth drinking, because they view these types of establishments as family-friendly, and so children are, they, they thought perhaps would be more likely to be exposed to, you know, or this type of use may normalize drinking for families. We heard other input from board members and members of the Advisory Committee that have, you know, have experienced one of these places that, you know, they didn't witness overdrinking. It was just, you know, families and friends spending time together, you know, in a multi-generational way.
Great. So I note that we have potential new police officers here who will face these issues in terms of making sure that, to the extent that there are these winery or brewery or other places, that they are being properly run and that, in fact, the concerns with our youth are being met. And I do note that the police chief did review this, this particular article and expressed no, no concerns from a public safety perspective. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, this is where you have the juxtaposition of promoting our businesses and promoting the local economy versus concerns for how residents are spending their time. And I guess, in my view, I think this needs an appropriate balance, and this is not as of right. This is going to be through a permitting process, and the laws that are out there with respect to public drinking, public nuisance, things like that, they are not repealed, and those remain in force. So I do support this. Thanks.
Bill?
Yeah, so I think this is, was a great use of a zoning amendment by the, by the Planning Board. I want to recognize the great work that Chair Kevin Ellis did to put this article forward. You know, I've had owners of breweries, I think at least three, come to me during my time on the Select Board with an interest in coming to Hingham, and the conversation starts with our zoning, and then it quickly ends with our zoning. It doesn't get beyond that, because our zoning is just, it's antiquated for types of new uses. I'm glad that the master plan objectives recited in support of this article, but I think these are uses that would benefit the downtown area. They would bring people to the downtown area. Last summer, Cohasset, they permitted a similar type outdoor brew pub, and when I was there, it brought a ton of people to a small, little downtown area, and individuals would leave there, go shopping, go out to dinner. So I think it would be a great way to bring some vitality, some energy to different parts of our community that we don't have right now. I've spoken with one or two owners of breweries that I know, and I asked them about the concern of the Board of Health, and while I share concern that drinking of, you know, drinking too much alcohol of any sort is a problem, there is absolutely no evidence that this use would support underage drinking. In fact, I would submit to, to those in the audience that restaurants that are failing to check IDs are more of a problem than modern-day breweries, who are very, very cautious and concerned about patrons being of appropriate age in their establishments. And lastly, as an Advisory Committee mentioned during the hearing, you know, these type of uses bring people of all different ages. They bring older people, they bring younger people, they bring families, they bring dogs. It's a great, great way to, again, bring some life and some economic vitality to downtown or other parts of our area that truly need this sort of economic use. So my compliments to the Planning Board for pushing this forward and using zoning amendments to advance some economic objectives that we have.
Excellent. Thank you.
Bill, I thought you were going to lead with anything that Cohasset can do. We can do better, so...
Well, you know, you raise a good point, but, and just one last point, is when the owners of these establishments have come to me trying to develop these small businesses here, and they've left, they've gone to Weymouth, Situit, Cohasset, all over the South Shore. So I don't see any reason why we can't, you know, advance something that's going to just help our community economically and also help these small businesses.
I apologize. If I could have one minute, I think I'm going to have to stop sharing and then reshare because my slides were not advancing.
I can keep talking if you want.
You're doing a great job.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the public on the articles we've reviewed so far?
Did you lose connection? Nope. I'm going to try from a PDF. That's okay.
This screen is not on at all. Does that matter? Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Here we go.
See how this goes? Okay, so now on to Article 33, which is related to EV charging parking requirements. The intent is to update the provisions of Section 5A, which regulate off-street parking, to clarify that electric vehicle charging requirements are only applicable to new or reconstructed parking lots that meet certain minimum size requirements. Under this middle section, you can see what that language is. Basically, it's parking lots of 20 or more parking spaces, but again, only, not existing ones, only newly created or reconstructed parking lots that meet that minimum size, have to comply with a regulation that was in fact adopted at annual Town Meeting last year. Both the Planning Board and the Advisory Committee during the public hearing process had recommended this underlined text to clarify that the requirement only related to new or reconstructed parking lots. Unfortunately, we didn't notice that the recommended motion that was printed in the warrant didn't include that language, even though the recommendations did. So this is really just a cleanup article that would reflect the, again, the recommendations of planning and AGCOM from last year. Last year, it was viewed, and as it was this year, as consistent with the master plan that suggested the town consider EV charging parking requirements. This year, it was unanimously recommended by both Planning and Advisory.
Emily, how do, how do the EV charging requirements interact with the accessibility parking requirements?
There, it's not our requirement under zoning, but the state provides guidance that a certain percentage of the accessible parking spaces also be made EV compatible. Last year, this particular article also included a change to what was then the effect of Section 5A of the bylaw that said any space dedicated to EV charging wouldn't count against the minimum number of spaces required for that particular use. So previously, the bylaw said if you're reserving a space for anything, it can't count towards your minimum, and that article amended that, but that was printed correctly in the recommended motion.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
No questions. Thank you.
We might need to put in another budget request.
You need a new laptop?
You didn't stage this, did you?
I guess I'm going to try to go back to PowerPoint.
It looks like you got it.
I think it's out.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. I forgot to stop sharing first. reshare. Yeah, this one doesn't want to advance in Zoom. And this one doesn't want to go backwards. Well, this one won't advance anymore either.
Yeah, that's the right article.
We should, oh, we just did 33. Oh, so 34 is what we're on.
Yeah.
Okay. It, I might not be able to get to the next page of that, but let's start with one.
I will note for the viewing public that we do these about 17 times a day and we never have a single problem until we're in the middle of a public meeting.
That's the way it goes.
Okay. Article 34. This is our final state mandated zoning article. It's related to a relatively recent state law enacted in 2021 that requires MBTA communities to create zoning capacity as opposed to actual housing production for multifamily housing. So a new Section 3A of the zoning act, Mass General Act, Chapter 40A, requires that MBTA communities have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right. That means pursuant to a building permit as opposed to a special permit or other mechanism that meets certain requirements. Those are bulleted here. There has to be a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre across the district. The district is supposed to be located not more than a half mile from public transit. The district cannot impose age restrictions, so it's not just senior housing, and it should be family-friendly, so you can't require that it be all studio apartments or one bedrooms. That's the, what the zoning act or the statute says. The statute also granted the authority to a state agency now known as the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to issue regulations or guidelines related to this requirement. EOHLC issued their final guidelines in August of 2022. They've been amended in a couple of minor ways since then, but they introduced a number of new concepts that, you know, interpreted in part what the statute was requiring. Many of those relate to the size requirements. So reasonable size pursuant to the guidelines is, is related not just to land area, again, 50 acres, but also to a minimum unit capacity. So communities zoning have to allow for a certain percentage based on the type of transit they have or the type of MBTA community they are defined as. That's a certain percentage of the number of units they had based on the 2020 census. For Hingham as a commuter rail community, that's 15%. That's equivalent to just under 1,500 units, 1,490. So that just gives you a snapshot of the types of requirements we had to meet. There are many, many others under the guidelines that, you know, we'd be happy to talk about, but that's a snapshot. Both the statute and the guidelines indicate that there is a consequence if a community fails to adopt this type of zoning. Much of the impact is financial. So the statute identified four specific discretionary state funding programs that that community would no longer be eligible for. The guidelines then identified 13 other discretionary state programs and included an allowance that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and the Executive Office of Economic Development, the MBTA, they would take noncompliance into consideration for any of their funding programs. The other aspect of noncompliance are potential legal consequences. The Attorney General last March said that a failure to comply may result in civil enforcement action. So that's just a summary of the state mandate. And then this slide will review, which is advancing. Yeah, that's fantastic. It reviews the, the summary process, excuse me, the process, a summary of the process. Locally, we've been talking about this since 2022, early in 2022. The town administrator, when the draft guidelines were released, provided comments to the state identifying some of our local concerns with the mandate. Leading up to this past summer, the planning board held two public meetings to discuss the requirements. There were an additional three joint meetings of the select board and the planning board. In January of 2023, this board identified a working group to make recommendations as to where the district could be located. The, the working group reported out in July of 2023. We settled on a, a district that is, you know, mostly identified in this image on the right-hand side. Thereafter, the working group drafted zoning regulations. Those were reviewed publicly by the planning board last fall during three public meetings prior to the December 1 deadline to initiate zoning amendments. There was other public outreach where the staff met with the, you know, representatives of the Democratic Town Committee, groups with the senior center. The Hingham anchor has run a number of articles. There's been Facebook posts. So we're trying to get the word out about this particular state mandate. We also were able to access some state funds for technical assistance through the Massachusetts Housing Partnership and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to prepare some of the materials that will be required if we are to file a final compliance application. The first is a compliance model. It's a very complex spreadsheet and GIS files that are required by the state. The second is an economic feasibility analysis and that supports some enhanced level of affordability if that's proposed in a community's district. Public hearings were initiated on an initial MBTA communities zoning district article in January of this year. The planning board held six separate sessions on that particular article, which is represented with revisions in the warrant. The planning board also later initiated an alternate district article and held two separate public hearings on that, but ultimately that article was withdrawn from consideration. So that does not appear in the warrant. Excuse me. The overlay district summary, and I guess it's important to note, this is structured as an overlay district. So whatever already has been permitted on the ground in these areas or otherwise be, would be allowed by the underlying zoning will continue and can continue. Nothing will become nonconforming if town meeting adopts this overlay district. The district overall consists of just over 50 developable acres and just over our minimum unit capacity. There are five different sub-districts within the overall district. So you can see those identified by color. They are handled differently because those areas allow different densities of multifamily housing. Ranges overall from eight units per acre to 42 units per acre. A component of the proposed zoning would be to require a certain level of affordability. We are targeting 15% of any multifamily housing built under this overlay district or permitted under this overlay district, that it be made eligible to households earning less than 80% area median income. The economic feasibility analysis that we received through one of those two-state grants supports that level, but if EOHLC were not to find that credible, the fallback would be 10%, which is simply allowed. We don't have to justify it. I guess it's also important to note that, you know, in addition to these allowed densities or requirements for affordability, there are a whole host of other standards built into the bylaw. First, any multifamily housing would require site plan approval from the planning board. So that includes a whole number of supplemental requirements ranging from traffic impact analysis to stormwater plans, photometric studies, et cetera. These developments would be helped to those standards. And then under the special regulations for the MBTA multifamily housing, there are also a number of design and dimensional requirements. No project would be eligible for a building permit to construct multifamily housing by right unless they met all of those standards. And in addition, there is no exemption or waiver process like with a 40B or comprehensive permit from other local regulations. So wetland regulations, border health regulations, et cetera. Geography-wise, if, if you can make out these little parcels, excuse me, the bulk of the district is located within the Hingham Ferry Terminal Transit area. It's intended to really recognize where Hingham has already permitted, albeit not by right, a significant, significant amount of multifamily housing. There is one sub-district located outside of that transit area, but in between the East Weymouth and the West Hingham commuter rail stations, we are allowed to have up to 25% of the district outside of more than a half mile from public transit. This particular sub-district is about 0.6 miles from the East Weymouth commuter rail station.
Excellent. I know this was a tremendous amount of work for you and Michael and the planning board, so thank you. Lots of public meetings, which was valuable input, and I'm very appreciative of how the public input was incorporated into the article that we have in front of us. So thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I mean, this was a great effort by the planning board, by Emily, you and your staff. And it's actually a fairly sophisticated math problem in, in getting this done right. So we really appreciate your, your work. I just want to draw distinction. I mean, I know you, you, you mentioned, and what's before us does talk about affordability, but this is not an affordability statute. This is a statute, it's for multifamily housing. And I think it's, it's the town, we are pushing to make sure that affordability is an aspect of this.
Yep.
And, which, which I think really speaks to the town's commitment to make sure that we do continue to maintain affordable housing. And the fact that we are above the threshold as required by 40B does not have an impact on this because this is, again, not a 40B-generated project. It is, again, a zoning that is intended to promote multifamily housing.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Within this district, somebody would have the option of seeking, you know, site plan approval to do multifamily housing. In theory, they also would have the option of seeking a comprehensive permit, but that could be, you know, denied and/or conditioned by the zoning board because of our level on the subsidized housing inventory without, you know, an appeal. Otherwise, the, the two permits are, are really independent.
Right. As I understand the statute, it's, it's intended to allow multifamily housing as a right. How does that work when we are also requiring site plan review?
So site plan review is for as-of-right uses. So, you know, it assumes as long as you meet all the standards.
We don't need, you don't need a permit. It's really just a, it's a site plan review.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, there's no waiver of border health requirements, if any, the other requirements that the town typically imposes on projects.
Yep.
And again, this is also not done in anticipation of any specific project.
Exactly. Yep. It's just zoning capacity as opposed to any actual production.
Got it. Okay. No other questions. Thank you.
Bill?
Just want to echo what Joe Ellis said, Emily. I really appreciate all the work you did on this. I know it was a long process, a lot of meetings, and you, you did a phenomenal job with this recommendation. Planning board did as well, and I know Michael put a lot of time into it. So my appreciation for getting a solid recommendation in the warrant and before town meeting.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public before we move on? All right, great. All right, 35. Do it for memory.
Let's try one more time.
Can you use Arts Computer?
Probably could. If I advance this slide first, then we can at least get to the next one. Okay. This next one actually will be familiar to you since Article 35 was initiated by the select board as opposed to the planning board. You can, you know, read the intent there. This is largely just viewed as a cleanup article. Back in 1976, a portion of the South Shore Country Club property was rezoned to business recreation. You can see where that, you know, this excerpt, that line is here. In 2004, town meeting intended to rezone the remainder of the South Shore Country Club from Residence District D to business recreation. There was a discrepancy between some of the local references, you know, i.e. the accessories, math, and lot that referred to the property and then the actual legal descriptions. So this, this article would just simply clean up that discrepancy.
No questions. This is, it's just a cleanup article. I'm fine with that.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay.
Emily, I will note this, you refer back to 1976, which is probably before some of our officer candidates were even born.
Actually before.
We can't attribute.
What do you mean? Some people up here, too.
Okay.
Not me, but others.
Not me either.
Okay, moving along. Article 36 relates to abandoned or discontinued nonconforming conditions. The intent is threefold. First, to clarify that a conforming, single-family or two-family dwelling use can be reestablished in an existing, like on the ground, nonconforming building that's been discontinued. That is presently allowed, but the, the language was proposed to be clarified. The original article also proposed The original article also proposed to allow what we presently allow by right, instead by a special permit. During the public hearing process, the Planning Board opted to remain with the current permitting mechanism. It just goes to the building department. What is more a new allowance as opposed to a clarification is Item 2. It would allow by special permit, a nonconforming, single-family dwelling that's been abandoned through demolition, so it no longer exists on the ground, to be reconstructed or reestablished within a certain period of time, 10 years specifically, and provided it meets certain dimensional requirements. So, that newly reconstructed house would still have to meet the applicable setbacks and height requirements in the district. Finally, the third item, we also presently allow for the reestablishment of dimensionally nonconforming buildings for permitted uses that are not single families or two families, so a retail store, restaurant, et cetera. But this article would apply the same dimensional, or excuse me, time parameter, so it could only take place within a 10-year period, and thereafter, use of that structure could no longer be reestablished. The way it does that, it just replaces wholesale to existing subsections of the bylaw. This article was viewed as locally initiated. There's actually an application that meets really that second item pending in front of the zoning board. A lot of, there was a lot of public support expressed for that particular project, and generally in the past, and Joe and Bill, you probably recall from prior zoning amendments, it's not seen as a public benefit to allow derelict buildings not to be used or vacant properties for single-family use to remain vacant. I'm sorry, it was unanimously recommended by both the Planning Board and the Advisory Committee.
Okay, I was just going to ask that. I don't see the recommended action in the document we have, but I'm assuming that's in the warrant.
The recommended motion of, advised, or what the, so it's under Article 36.
Okay.
An advisory adopted what the Planning Board recommended.
Okay.
It's just not counted.
Oh, not counted. Okay. So, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, this really, I think, clarifies what the ZBA has been administering for several years, so, no questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay. All right. 37?
Yeah, moving right along. So, Article 37 relates to special requirements in the official and open space district. The intent is twofold. One, to remove certain special requirements. It's special requirement one that are applicable in that district and require that structures and other improvements, including parking lots and septic systems, things that aren't necessarily regulated normally through our base dimensional requirements, to be located a certain distance from residential districts, specifically 50 to 100 feet, as opposed to what we more commonly regulate to, which are minimum yard dimensions, and you can see down in this chart below. So, instead of 50 to 100 feet from a residential district, buildings and other structures would have to be located 40 feet from front to side and rear property lines under the first item. Item 2 would have created exemptions for certain recreational improvements specifically, including, you know, backstops, basketball hoops, et cetera, provided that those improvements be not closer than 15 feet from a property line. So, that's an exemption under our definition of structure, which already does include certain exemptions for things like sheds in residential districts, for utility pools, anywhere, et cetera, flagpoles. This second item was amended through the public hearing process, so there'd be two categories, really, of recreational improvements that would be exempt in one form or another. The first relates to backstops, fencing, and safety netting, and that's anywhere in the official and open space district. The second would apply only to existing playground equipment, basketball hoops, goalposts, and field lighting. So, that would be for the replacement of those types of improvements, provided they're 15 feet from the property line. They would be allowed under the exemption versus any, you know, baseball field, you could put a backstop up, even if it was a brand-new baseball field, it wouldn't have to be existing. It was seen as consistent with both the master plan and the comprehensive athletic field and outdoor court study. That 2020 athletic field and outdoor court study notes that technology and current sports lighting is significantly advanced compared to five, 10 years ago, when, you know, some of our field lighting went in. Sports lighting of appropriate height results in better-lit facilities, improved nighttime play, reduced light spillage, so less impact on abutting properties, and less glare. And then, the 2021 master plan more broadly said that the town should provide a range of opportunities for recreational activities for all ages and abilities, and recommended that the town consider recreational opportunities identified by the field study. So, this was really locally identified. I guess I probably, from the outside, should have mentioned that the official and open space district primarily consists of town-owned public property, some state-owned property as well, or non-profit.
Bill, did you have a question?
I do, so I think this is a great article. So, with respect to field lighting, so there's a current restriction on height. I'm thinking right now Carlson Lynch is the biggest one. Does this now exempt that height restriction?
It would, provided the light post is more than 15 feet from the property line. So, it's providing, it's creating some equity between the town-owned recreational facilities and the school-owned recreational facilities, where pursuant to the Dover Amendment, the schools can seek a waiver. And, you know, we've noticed from the high school at this point, you know, I'm not getting complaints about that lighting because of its height. So, this would provide some relief for the town-owned facilities.
And it's a, and it's a great article because the technology, as you noted, the lights come down, opposed to the current lights, for example, Lynch, that spill out. So, it's actually less obtrusive to abutters to have the new technology implemented, so. Great.
Yep, no questions.
Okay. And this was unanimous as well?
Oh, yes. Okay, no, it's okay. It was in its revised.
Great.
We have just two more. Okay, may I reshare? Okay, Article 38 is entitled Maximum Height in the Harbor Overlay District. The intent, there's two pieces. First, to eliminate the requirement that the height of buildings in this overlay district, which is pretty limited, it's just along the inner harbor, you know, and backing up to Route 3A, that it be measured from pre-construction grade rather than finished grade, like all other heights in other districts. So, again, it's sort of an equity issue. Two, to allow the space between the maximum wall height of 20 feet for buildings and the maximum roof peak height of 28 feet for buildings to be occupied. Presently, in the overlay district, that space is limited to storage, even though, you know, from a zoning perspective, we normally are controlling the, you know, the external massing of a structure and less concerned about the internal use. In part, you know, these two items were proposed because there are, any buildings along the inner harbor are likely to also have to meet FEMA floodplain protection regulations, and these two existing provisions were really seen as constraining any reconstruction of the handful of buildings that are in the overlay district. So, if you have to meet freeboard and, where in addition, raising the height of the wharfs were really squeezing the amount of building that you can construct or use. It was seen as consistent with the master plan, which includes a goal to enhance public access to the harbor and its amenities while protecting the coastline, and two, you know, encourages that we redesign and restore the wharves and related harbor infrastructure to be more resilient to projected sea level rise. The Planning Board and the Advisory Committee both unanimously recommended adoption.
Great. Joe, do you have any questions?
Emily, was there much public comment on this?
There was no public comment.
Yeah, I'm not aware. Okay, no questions.
There was an opportunity for public comment, but none given. Okay. Bill?
No questions.
Okay.
Okay, just one more time. Last, but not least, Article 39 proposes an update, ooh, I just hit from the beginning. Okay, good, it didn't listen to me. To update our current nursing home use. The intent is to broaden the use, to include a specific reference to assisted living facilities, and also to specify that it is intended to provide for the care of both disabled and elderly persons. You can see the actual regulation that's proposed. Here in the middle, the underlined text is the new text, and then there's some stricken-through text that is proposed to be removed. The amendment was seen as consistent with the master plan, which includes a policy recommendation to provide for the development of housing that's appropriately designed, managed, and located for both older adults and people with disabilities. So, this was seen as a locally initiated amendment, and it was unanimously supported by both the Planning Board and the Advisory Committee.
Excellent.
No questions.
Any questions? Bill?
No questions.
All right. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Do we have anyone online?
If anybody is interested in more background information, because I know that took too long, but it was a high-level summary.
Yes, it's perfect.
The Planning Board's webpage does include all the presentations, revised text, and background materials on each of the 11 articles.
Excellent. Thank you. It was a tremendous amount of work.
Yes.
Eleven's a lot.
It was.
Yes, it is a lot.
I will note for the record that our chair's estimate that this would take an hour was spot-on.
Emily, I used to hope for an hour. Yes, well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, we're sort of on track, but I am going to skip around the agenda a little bit and just go directly to the police officer appointments. We have three potential candidates, Dylan T. Leary, Robert Patrick Sullivan, and Aaron S. Richardson. Chief, do you want to come on up? Good evening.
Should we start with a quiz for the candidates on the warrant articles?
Yeah.
Exactly.
If the deputy chiefs can answer them, then yes.
Perfect. Actually, just wanted to review how we got to this point today.
Sure, that'd be great.
Great, so we started, we have some current openings. We started, put out civil service cards, notifications for interested candidates back in November. They completed their background investigations with our detective division. They subsequently went to a police panel interview, which they all successfully passed, and they went before the Select Board last week. And they're here tonight for consideration for appointment as police officers. So, I just want to say how lucky we are in Hingham to have such great candidates consistently. And I'd argue that we have one of the best agencies in this area, if not the entire state, and these three gentlemen's commitment to the community, giving back, just sort of exemplifies that and what we're all about. So, I'm happy to make a recommendation to the board for appointment for Dylan T. Leary, Robert P. Sullivan, and Aaron S. Richardson as conditional offer of employment as police officers for the town of Hingham.
Excellent, thank you. Well, thank you for all that you've done in this process. I know it's quite rigorous, the series of interviews and the background investigations. I was very impressed as well with the candidates. We are lucky. I am the police liaison this year, and so I've had the opportunity to get to know more about the police department and work very closely with the chief, and I am continually impressed by the level of professionalism and all that you do. And I really enjoyed meeting the candidates last week, although it was brief. I think we got a good sense of their character, their integrity. Many of them, they spoke about communication and community policing and really understanding that and having a love of this community as a starting point, which I think makes a big difference. So, do you have any questions, Joe?
Well, I've asked all my questions of the candidates, and the fact that you sat through the last hour and you're still smiling speaks volumes to your commitment to this town. I do have a question for the chief, which I have asked prior times, and I know his answer, but I just want to get it on the record. Do you have any reservations about moving forward with any of these candidates?
I have no reservations at all, no.
We are, I mean, having heard from them and having given them the opportunity to speak their minds, I'm very impressed, so I'm looking forward to the vote.
Excellent. Bill?
I just wanted to say, you know, one of the things that I was so impressed by is that the three of you are already involved with our community. You know, Bobby, you worked as an assistant harbor master. Aaron, you already have experience in law enforcement, you've worked within the community, and Dylan, you were a special police officer. So, I mean, when I met the three of you last week, I was just so thrilled that you were already involved in our community. And I agree 100% with the chief. You know, we hear consistently about nationwide, there's a shortage of qualified and strong applicants going into police work, but this is, you know, my fourth year on the board, and we have consistently hired high, high-quality, high-caliber applicants. And, you know, you're being hired by the three of us tonight, but you're really being welcomed into a family in the Hingham Police Department, and it's a department that looks out for each other. They care about each other, they want you to succeed, our community wants you to succeed, and the three of us certainly want you to succeed as well. So, I know that the academy at times will probably be tough, challenging, physically challenging, mentally challenging, morally challenging, but I would encourage you to get each other through. And what you do in the academy will stay with you through your entire career as a police officer. My brother still talks about how he made great friendships with some of his fellow officers while he was in the academy, and now, 30-something years later, those bonds, those friendships are still there. So, I'm just thrilled to hire the three of you. I want to congratulate you, want to congratulate your families as well. All three of you come from some great families, which I think is always the cornerstone of good police officers. Congratulations.
We do need to take the vote.
So, I would like, I'd like to make a motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Dylan T. Leary, Robert Patrick Sullivan, and Aaron S. Richardson as permanent. police officers for the town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to the following. A, successful passing of the required medical examination. B, successful passing of the required physical abilities tests. C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process. D, successful passing of all other requirements for entrance into the police academy. E, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to repayment of the $4,650 recruitment training fee and cost of any initially issued police equipment if the appointed officer ceases employment with the town of Hingham Police Department within the first five years. F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief. And G, subject to an available appropriation and any and all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation.
Second.
Before I take real call vote, I will just ask if there are any questions or comments from members of the public. Okay. Seeing none, real call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well, passes unanimously. Congratulations and well done. Sure. You want to do photos? And then we'll move.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you.
Grandpa has been in hookups.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Now, this picture is more important than the eclipse pictures that we're taking.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sue, do you want to come up? What's up, Bobby?
You want to come up quickly? Go ahead. This doesn't happen every day.
It's only going to happen once.
Of course.
Glad you're here.
Hey, Jack, congratulations. Thank you.
Sure. That's your job.
Me and chief.
Well, that's great.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Mark's the receiving line.
Disrupted.
No. Well, thank you.
You're always coming, disrupting our meetings up here.
Yes, yes. Nice for being here.
You did, yes, exactly. Thank you. Thank you. Great job. Thank you. All right, Mark, thank you for your patience. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Shrewsbury Landscapes Incorporated to provide infield openings and turf management services. Kathy is not on, correct? Okay. All right, Mark, you're on your own. Don't get it.
Good evening. So, yes, looking for approval, tend to a three-year agreement with Shrewsbury Landscapes. They are the vendor that the town has had agreement with the past three years. They've done exceptional work, have been a great partner with the town of Hingham. Their quality of work is top-notch. Their responsiveness is top-notch, so been extremely pleased with our partnership and looking forward to the next three years.
Excellent. I just had a question about the billing. Do they invoice as they're doing a project or time spent? I know there's a not-to-exceed number and then the total or an up-to ceiling amount. So do they just bill on an annual basis or as they're doing the work?
As they're doing the work.
Okay.
So the job is complete, and then we get the invoice from them.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi.
Sorry, I was.
That's okay.
That's Heidi.
Did you want to add anything? Did you hear what Mark said?
No, but I know we put it out to bid under the state contract, so.
Okay.
They were the only bidder.
Okay. Any questions, Joe?
Just in terms of this is a three-year contract?
Yes.
Is that the appropriate time period, timeframe for this contract to be extended? Or, I mean, why three years? Why not two or why not four? What's the magic with three?
I can answer that. Well, I would say it's because we, we know we're going to use them for three years. We asked the vendor to commit the price for three years, and it just takes extra time to do amendments every year when we know, as well as the contract allows for, you know, you can cancel the contract at any time, so.
Yep. Okay, great. No other questions?
Bill?
This is a company we've been using, right? Since we started this program. I mean, they're doing phenomenal work. I mean, the fields look great. The difference in the quality of the grass and the infills are just night and day. So 100% endorse this company's work. Your leadership, Mark, has been great, and it's really made a big difference. And I hear nothing but compliments. I remember the days when, you know, Haley and Hershey would be dust bowls by July 4th, and you'd have kids playing in summer with, like, brown grass, dust everywhere. It was awful. Now it's green, the infills are redone. Can't say enough for great thing, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Certainly, this has been a successful program, and if you're comfortable with this vendor, everything looks fine to me. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
Can I ask one last question?
Sure.
I was at a Little League coaches' meeting recently, and it was put out that Little League is also helping to contribute to infield reconstruction. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Great.
Yes, Little League's been a great partner to work with and as well, and they've helped financially get some of the fields outside of this program. So they've been a great partner to work with.
Excellent. Great. It's great to hear that.
Good.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Shrewsbury Landscapes Incorporated to provide infield openings and turf management services in an amount that shall not annually exceed $219,810 and shall not exceed $659,430 in total.
Second.
Real call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right.
Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the contract amendment with T.L. Edwards Incorporated to provide roadway management services. We have J.R. Frye on the line. Hi, how are you?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. We are looking to extend the contract for another year with T.L. Edwards. It's under the consortium bid, so that is through the South Shore Consortium, and the pricing will remain the same. And we will, the number's a little bit lower than it has been in the past. We have some other commitments for our Chapter 90 money, and that's the reason for that modest reduction. Are there any questions from the select board?
So what does this represent, then? How many roads or what's kind of the scope of the work?
So the scope of their work is, it's really the primary paving application that they do for us. If we are doing a reclaim, then we have another vendor that handles that work for us. But if it's any type of a milling product, and all of the pavement placement is typically done by T.L. Edwards, they do do an exemplary job. They deliver a high-quality product and install it with a high, in a high-quality manner. So as a general rule, we're really only looking at two streets for this year's construction effort. We may finagle some budgeting to try and squeeze a third street in, but so that this contract represents really the paving application and a little bit of adjusting drainage structures and things so that everything works properly.
Okay. Thank you. Joe?
Is this an amendment to add an additional $300,000 or to increase the cap to $300,000? It wasn't clear.
It's to add another $300,000. It's this year's budget. Last year was, I would say, significantly higher, J.R.?
Yes.
So this is amending it to extend it for another, for two years, for the remaining two years that's available, and for increasing it for $300,000 just for this year, for the DPW paving season.
To increase?
So next year, we'll come back with another amendment that will increase it when we know what the amount is next year.
So even though this is a two-year amendment, the funding is just for one year?
Right.
Per that year's appropriation.
Subject to appropriation, right.
And what was the amount last year?
It was, we actually amended it. So let me see. Hold on one second. The original was, I apologize, I'm looking up the file.
Do you have any questions, Bill, while Kathy's looking for that?
Yeah.
When does paving season start, J.R.? Is it April 15th? Is that right?
Well, the plants are open as of now.
Yeah.
However, our paving season will basically begin after school ends.
Okay. Great.
So, okay, sorry. The original contract we did last May, I believe, was $450,000, and in June, we added another $40,000 to it.
But we think $300,000 is sufficient for the upcoming year.
It's sufficient, I believe it's sufficient for our current scope of work, yes.
Okay. And did we exhaust the amount that was appropriated last year?
Yes.
No other questions?
Bill, any other questions?
No.
Okay. I'm ready to take it. Well, are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. I'm ready to take a motion.
So I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the amendment to the agreement with T.L. Edwards, Inc., for roadway management services to increase the total value by $300,000 and to extend the term of the agreement through December 31, 2025.
Second.
Real call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Excellent. Thank you, J.R. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Next on the agenda is to proclaim April 19, 2024, as Education and Sharing Day in the Town of Hingham. Joe?
So I will take this one on, the proclamation. Whereas Hingham is a community that is committed to excellence in education, recognizing that a quality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country, and our society at large. And whereas Hingham recognizes the important contributions of its teachers, paraprofessionals, school administrators, and staff in assuring high-quality education for our children. And whereas April 19, 2024, marks what would have been the 122nd birthday of Rabbi Menachem Schneerson, the Lubavitcher Rebbe, a leader who is devoted to educating people worldwide and who demonstrated a profound respect for diversity, inclusiveness, and equal justice. And whereas Rabbi Schneerson recognized the importance of building character and moral values as well as intellect. And whereas in 1978, the United States Congress established his birthday as a national day to raise awareness and to strengthen the education of our children. And whereas, beginning with President Jimmy Carter and continuing annually with every president, through and including the current presidency of Joe Biden, a federal proclamation has been issued declaring Education and Sharing Day, USA, and celebrating the work of Rabbi Schneerson as a thinker, leader, and teacher who recognized the limitless potential of every human being regardless of their background. And whereas, we affirm our support for education and social service institutions that empower our children and inspire persons of all ages. And whereas, we call on all residents of Hingham to increase their energy and dedication to the education of our youth. And whereas, we call upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to those within your communities and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all. Now therefore, we, the select board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 19, 2024, Education and Sharing Day in Hingham.
Second.
Real call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Excellent. Thank you. So April 19 is Education and Sharing Day. Next on the agenda is to proclaim April 22, 2024, as Earth Day in the Town of Hingham. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Earth Day proclamation. Whereas, the Town of Hingham, as part of the global community, is participating in Earth Day 2024 and recognizes the environmental challenges faced by all peoples. And whereas, it is understood that as citizens of the global community, the Town of Hingham must step forward and take action to create positive environmental changes that will support the management and care of our environment. And whereas, environmental education, along with awareness, helps the citizens of Hingham develop the concern and skills to address the environmental challenges we face. And whereas, in recognition of today's environmental challenges, trees will be planted as a symbol to our commitment to the good stewardship of all that is entrusted to our care. Whereas, the Town of Hingham pledges to support environmental and educational initiatives in our community that encourage others to undertake similar actions. Now therefore, we, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Monday, April 22, 2024, as Earth Day, dated this 8th day of April 2024.
I would second that.
Real call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. April 22 is Earth Day in Hingham. Next on the agenda is to proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the Town of Hingham.
Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in Hingham increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, Hingham, Massachusetts, has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, we, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
Real call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Arbor Day is April 26, 2024. Okay. Next on the
Okay, with that, I would like to make a motion to enter executive session under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Town Administrator Tom Mayo, the board will not reconvene in open session.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So we will not be back in open session. Thank you.